So you left off with me.
Okay, thank you. So I think I left on page seven is where we stopped?
Yes, because I was --
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, because I was asking some questions. And I know that earlier you had said that you were going to go back probably this afternoon and crunch some of the numbers. And I like to be able to see that as well for the questions that I've asked. Excuse me, for the 457, I mean, that should not, there shouldn't be any calculations, no negative impact in terms of, you know, allowing then the employees to increase it up to, I mean, at least 3 percent.
Sure.
The question where you're going to probably need to crunch some numbers will be, excuse me, the 401 plan right now, that's a mandatory plan for the D.C., that if, you know, this scenario in which the government instead then increases the government's share 1 percent or 2 percent and how that then would, together with, of course, the hybrid where there's that reduction from, you know, down from 5 percent now to 1.8 percent. So I like to be able to hear what that would look like. The other concern that I have, when you were discussing this earlier when Senator Rodriguez was speaking and others, and I pulled out the Milliman client report, and although you're saying it is cost neutral, on the DB contribution rate after 17 years then, on year 2032, is that it drops. You know, it starts at 2014 at 30 percent, then it drops down to 2031 at 18 percent, and then down to 2032 at 5.7. Now, on the D.C. plan, on 2014, is 24 percent, and it gradually comes down to then, on 2032, to 0.49 percent. And it would remain at 5 percent, 5 point, even down to 5.39 in 2052, versus the D.C. reduction under all at 0.49 down to 0.29. Can you please explain, then, after 17 years, when you're saying that, you know, how is this cost neutral with the contribution, you know, rate then of 5.67 for the DB plan, but then the D.C. is at 0.49?
Senator, the, what happens in 2031 is that big unfunded liability right now of 24 percent goes away. And the only thing that exists after 2031 is now the normal cost to the government. And so that's why you see that big decline after 2031, is because until 2031, Gov Guam has to pay that unfunded liability of 24 percent.
And then for the D.C., you're saying earlier, and I wrote it down, you said there is no unfunded liability for the D.C. plan. Is that, I wrote down?
That's correct.
Okay.
By design, the D.C. plan is a plan where the government contributes a match, and that is the extent of the government's liability to the D.C. member, the 5 percent.
So after 17 years correspondingly, for the D.C. plan, you have a 0.49 percent. So what does that mean then? Compared to now, what you're saying, the regular government contribution after, you know, the unfunded liability of $1.4 million is paid off?
Is paid off. That's correct.
Yeah, so if you take a look at, right now, the normal cost for the D.C. plan is the 5 percent employer contribution plus the .4, which is the administrative cost. So that administrative cost doesn't go away because the D.C. plan's still in existence. And so when you're looking at the .49 percent after 2031, that's how much it's going to cost the D.C. plan members to administratively function the plan. Whereas on the DB side, that 6 point or 5 point --
5.67.
That's how much it's costing the retirement fund to administer the DB plan after the unfunded goes away. So once 2031 comes and the unfunded gets paid, that employer contribution, the government share dramatically decreases. And so that's what that chart is intending to portray.
But it also dramatically decreases as well for the D.C., which is still, again, much less. I'm just looking at numbers.
Sure.
I know you guys know this better than I, but, you know?
Well, that's because in the D.C., in the D.C. plan, remember, right now, the government's still paying the same contribution rate, whether you're a DB or a D.C. member.
So you're saying the .49 percent then after 17 years will be just administrative costs?
Yeah, so right now, if you, Madam Speaker, it's 30.03 for 2014.
Right.
That includes the unfunded liability of 24 percent. And so once that unfunded liability gets paid off in 2031, the only cost associated with administering any of the plans is what's presented there.
Now --
And that's why the D.C. goes to zero, because once the unfunded gets paid, there's no more unfunded liability being drawn from the government.
So then you're saying for the DB plan, then, the 5.67 is, is not, I mean, none of that's being used for administrative costs?
That is administrative cost. That is the normal cost to implement the DB plan, 5.7 percent, 5.67.
So then just, I mean, so now you're telling me both these numbers that we're looking at are for administrative costs, but then 5.67 versus .47 percent?
Right, is a big difference.
You're right.
And the difference is a result of the fact that, under the D.C. side, you know, the liability goes to zero, because all that, all that the D.C., all of the government is responsible for is to match. Whereas the administrative cost to run a DB plan is, I mean, it's higher. There's more involved with running a D.C., with particularly our D.C. plan where we administer not just the normal pensions, but also look over and make decisions on disability pensions, which, which is, which is, well, it's expensive A, and it's, well, it's expensive A.
So, so those are currently then on the 401K plan, which is, you know, a mandatory plan, will continue, of course, even with this hybrid plan?
The 401, the 401, the D.C. plan will continue so long as there are members, so long as there are members in it, yes, absolutely.
And you're going to crunch the numbers to see what it would be like if the government instead, you know, increases it to 6 percent and 7 percent, and then what the investment, the, when the employee is vested?
Yeah, so we can, we can determine what the cost would be, well, we can estimate what the cost would be for the government if we increase contribution rate by 1 or 2 percent above, right?
Right.
But what we're not going to be able to do is give you what the end result would be. We can assume an investment return rate, but we just don't know what, you know, what
But I'm, I'm still going on the premise that Speaker Joe T. said. And remember this now.
Okay.
With this retirement plan is that, you know, we want to, we want to take care, of course, of our government employees. And we did that in the 50s, early 50s, is to order, I mean, give out a Cadillac, so to speak, plan, and to keep our employees. Then, you know, we wanted them to reduce the, the cost of the government later on now, because we do have our employees who are staying.
Mm-hmm.
But yet they're not going to be able to get that dignified type of retirement because, you know, some investments just didn't go well. But then now here we are, and we're now more investment savvy, not, not everybody here, I'm sure. I know I'm not going to claim to be one, but there are those who do.
Sure.
And, and they've also have asked is that want, they want to not only stay, but that they want instead, because the government's going to reduce their cost on the hybrid, could that then difference go to the D.C. plan for, you know, the employees, the government contribution?
Right.
And just simple numbers, 5 percent, so let's say just break it down, you know, to $5, let's say, versus $1.80, that they're going to be contributing to the hybrid plan, that the difference of $3.20 can be used then to increase now?
Do something else, yeah.
The contribution for those employees on the D.C. plan.
Okay, well, we'll, we will work on some of those numbers. I think what we need to do, I mean, I'm hearing it, I guess, more and more as, you know, as the questions come up, is clarify exactly what that 1.8 percent really represents, because it's, and we had some discussion, you know, while the resolution was going on. And maybe during lunch or during the next break, we'll go back and try to spend a little more time to, to explain what that 1.8 percent is relative to the government's contribution rate with or without the hybrid plan, so that there's clarity on, on that when we speak to it. Because I think there remains, and I don't know that we have enough, I mean, because there's, there's some questions that you have, and I don't want to digress into trying to explain that necessarily at this point. But I, I feel that there's some, there's a misunderstanding, a general misunderstanding, and perhaps our fault for not explaining it correctly, on what that 1.8 percent represents. So we'll, we'll spend some time in trying to clarify that.
Is there a penalty for those on the D.C. plan for not transferring?
For not transferring, there's no, no, no.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm, I'm on page, I'm on page nine, which is going to speak to some of the benefit compensation. And this is, these are estimates, and I think where we're probably going to, well, I'll just go with it, we're probably going to get a lot of questions from here, but where the rubber kind of meets the road. So this is an example of a single employee, of an employee of the government of Guam, average employee of the government of Guam, starts in 2015, retires after 30 years at age 65, with a starting salary of $40,000, and a projected salary at retirement increments and promotions and so forth of almost, or a little more than twice that, at $81,800. This, the table below gives you an idea of what that employee could expect under each of the different scenarios. The D.C. 457 account balance at $364,000 and so on. I'll, I mean, you got, you see the numbers, I can repeat them if you want. Sure. Okay, yes.
I, I'm sorry, the, the numbers that, that is, is before us right now, based on a new employee, you have a starting salary at $40,000, but in Gov Guam, the entry level can go as far down as 8.25 to $10 an hour, which is the average?
Sure.
For, for a new government employee.
Sure.
So if you calculated that right, what would the benefits be in the long run?
I think we have that number too, Senator.
If you can provide that?
Can you tell that one from Milliman?
That's fine. I believe we gave Senator Rodriguez a copy. But it's in the actual committee report.
And so, okay, so to your question, around $20,000 is the figure that we use, $20,000 annual salary. The projected salary at retirement is just under $60,000, so 59,270 some dollars annually. And again, a higher age, hired at the age 20 and retired at the age 65, so similar scenarios. So on this, on this plan, under the D.C. plan, a calculated annuity of 1651 with the social security hybrid benefit, 2455, and then the hybrid, 3447. This is, this is what, an estimate of an individual, again, with the $40,000 as a starting salary, retiring after 30 years at age 65.
Senator Jim Tjako, the Speaker.
Jerry, just so that we understand the assumptions behind the number, this account balance assumes that on the current D.C. plan, there's the 5 percent employer contribution and the 5 percent employee contribution?
That's correct.
Okay, so could we kindly have the numbers with the current D.C. plan? Because currently the hybrid, we're comparing it to the hybrid plan where we were asking basically the employee to increase their contributions up, from 5 percent up to 10.5 percent, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, so what I'd like to just see to compare the numbers, if we can, if we can just, just so that we're doing apples to apples, if we can see that same number for the current D.C. plan, assuming that there was an additional 5 and 1/2 percent contribution by the employee?
Okay.
Just so that it's apples to apples.
Sure. So we're saying, so what you, what you want, what you want to see is a D.C. contribution at 10 and 1/2 to match the?
To, to match the, and you can keep the rate of return the same?
Actually, 9 and 1/2, right? Because the DB, the hybrid, the DB portion of the hybrid is just the 9 and 1/2 percent. The 1 percent goes to a D.C. option. I don't know that it's necessarily --
It is, yes.
Okay.
Got it.
And, and, and you can keep, and just so that I'm clear, this, this table still represents the assumption that the hybrid plan will return 7 percent and the D.C. plan returned 5 percent, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Speaker and then Senator Yamashita.
Thank you again very much. Oh, she's not here. Senator Munya Barnes, of course, had asked that question, and this was, this was the question I was asking that evening and the second evening, is that I really wanted to see what it would be much lower at a starting salary of $40,000. So what I did is I actually went to our H.R. to find an employee at, and the lowest we have here is $15,080. And, and just to look at what it would be like on a monthly basis, based on the reduction, based on the contribution of 10 and 1/2 percent total, you know, 10 and 1/2. And so we added on the difference so that we can see. And I took an employee at a very low, meaning by himself, you know, not to do many deductions and medical stuff, his take-home pay, in essence, would, would come up to $461, you know, every two weeks, about maybe $900 a month.
A month.
You're right. And when we factor that in, of course, then you want to look at rent reasonably, you know, a $500 rent, $200 for food, $200 for gas, maybe 100, 150 for utilities?
Sure.
And then, you know, of course, what his final take-home pay?
Right.
Would be. Then we took the high as well with a family and children, and the same average, you know, for all the expense. And in essence, this person will be in the red of, you know?
I mean, I think, yeah, the logical conclusion to that exercise is you can't live on $15,000 a year, period, no matter how you slice it.
You're right.
Retirement or not.
And some of these people, of course, is that?
Yeah, it's tough.
And I spoke to, to one other individual for 17 years, and he hasn't gotten a raise at all.
Yeah.
I couldn't understand it, but 17 years.
I talked to their employer.
And, you know, and this is $7.25, and you're right, it's going to go up with the, you know, the minimum wage.
Soon.
So that, I, I think that would be like the normal course of an increase?
Right.
In their, in their lives, because then you, you have individuals who would be at, unfortunately, at the low end, because they won't have, you know, the, some of the skills that, you know, for any higher-paying jobs.
Right.
These are the ones that, you know, I had asked, I was really concerned about, you know, and, and you're right, even, even, I mean, seriously, $40,000 starting and then retiring at just double, you know, that amount, even that 81,000 is just not enough.
Speaker, that's, those are good points, and, you know, you take that exact same scenario, and you fast forward 30 years, and imagine those guys at 65 years old trying to live in those conditions. And that's what we were faced with when trying to develop this hybrid plan, because under the current D.C. plan, that's what, that exact scenario is going to happen if we don't, if something isn't done. And I, we've said, you know, this isn't the panacea, for sure. There's going to be trade-offs, and we're going through some of those trade-offs today. But I would simply suggest that we don't get caught up in the same paralysis that this has been caught up in for the last 10 years, because come next year, we're, we're a year closer to that reality that you just described, except they're not kids who are employable for the next 10 years, they're adults who are not employable, because they've worked for 20 and 30 years in, for the government.
I'm having distributed right now answers that were provided in the last legislature when we were discussing 382. Senator Ben had a, a bill, and it got caught up in this whole thing. Just to show you that these questions were asked before. All right? And the, the retirement fund has answered those questions even two years ago, under $20,000. And so?
Go ahead, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you. And I appreciate this, because while some of you have been in great study about this for 10 years, some of us have not been. And so that's why, you know, we're really looking at this. And so, and I appreciate the $20,000 starting pay, because, you know, I'm kind of wondering where we got $40,000 as a, a target to study. I mean, teachers who are degreed usually start at 28.
Starting.
At starting. And so I don't really know any government employees who start at 40, unless I just don't know who they are.
If you took the pay scale in its entirety, that was the average.
Average, wow. Okay, but anyway, again, I don't, I don't, I know what you're saying, we don't want to get caught up in that, in those kinds of things, but, you know, the details do make a difference. So that was, that's, that was my question, it's tagging on Senator Tino, was where did we get the 40?
Okay.
So that's the average. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that was just a, a number that we pulled based on, based on averages, we needed, we needed something.
Mr. Chair. We're still on page 11, yeah?
Page 11.
Nine?
Nine.
Am I ahead of everybody?
Okay.
Let me back up a little bit here. My question was with respect to, oh, nine, yeah. Now, just to clarify, Senator Jim Tjako inquired the assumptions that were used for the D.C. plan amounts and the hybrid, so the D.C. plan amount assumption was 5 percent and the hybrid was 7?
Correct.
Yeah, and the reason why we assumed 5 in the D.C. plan was, you know, we're saying if the employee doesn't, you know, get the same return as, as if it were in the hybrid. But if the hybrid also returned 5 percent, but we were paying that annuity out at an anticipated 7 percent return, that 2 percent difference would be an unfunded liability?
I mean, yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So can we add a calculation then also?
But why would we do that, though? Why would we do that? Why would we?
Because I, I like, I like to look at things apples to apples, not just apples to oranges, because I really like to compare two fruits that are the same. And so if we're going to be saying the D.C. plan returns are only 5 percent, then let's assume that the hybrid plan's returns are also 5 percent, and that becomes an unfunded liability.
Okay.
And so what will that total amount of unfunded liability become if the hybrid only returned 5 percent?
I mean, we can do the calculation for you, but if it's not based on reality, I'm wondering what material value it's going to bring?
7 percent isn't based on reality either, it's an assumption. So I'm saying let's use the same assumptions.
We've returned 7 percent, we returned 14 last year, actually probably a little more than that. So our average rate of return is upside 7 percent. Our actuarial rate of return is 7 percent.
And this is, this is the exact kind of conversation that I'm worried we're going to have with employees, where we tell them that, oh, yeah, we got this before in the past, we're going to continue to get this in the future. That's, that's the conversation we had with them when we convinced them to go with the D.C. plan.
I wasn't there.
Oh, look at, look at the returns of the D.C. plan, and if you convert, you're going to grow your account to this amount of millions of dollars, so sign here on the dotted line. So let's just have the assumption the same, and let's assume that we only got 5 percent on the hybrid, and let's see what the unfunded liability would be if those assumptions were all equal across the board.
Okay, okay. 5 percent straight across, for the?
It's right there.
Oh, it is.
And what you have in front of you that I just distributed from 392.
Oh, it does include it. I'm sorry, I'm spoke, I think it has already --
No, it includes what the, what the amount would be, but see, we're, we're providing a guaranteed annuity. So what would the difference be that would become an unfunded liability to the retirement fund? That's the calculation I want. Because if the hybrid's returns are 5 percent, but we're assuming 7 percent, and the person's annuity is going to be based on a percentage of their income?
But you're, you're then assuming?
Exactly the same as the $40,000, age 65, 30 years of service, we're assuming the payout's going to be $3,747.
So you're assuming an expected long-range?
Now, that's 3,747.
No, just so I understand.
One second. That $3,747 is based on the assumptions of them having a $40,000 salary, growing to $81,856 after 30 years of service. So they're going to get paid at $3,747. Now, if the hybrid only returned 5 percent over that same period, we still will be paying the $3,747 to the employee. So what would the difference be in terms of what the, the hybrid was able to earn from that employee versus what it has to pay, and what would that amount total to for the unfunded liability? Because that really would be the unfunded liability.
Are you assuming that then a 5 percent average rate of return for the plan over the long horizon?
The exact same assumptions?
For, for the hybrid? For the hybrid is what?
The exact same assumptions as on page nine.
So if there were a 5 percent actual rate of return for the hybrid plan over the long time horizon, there wouldn't be an unfunded liability. We'd adjust the contribution rate to account for that drop in the, in the, in that rate of return.
Adjust whose contribution rate?
We would adjust the government, the employer.
And you wouldn't need to go back to the legislature to have that contribution rate adjusted?
Every year we submit a, a number that represents a contribution rate.
So then what we would need then is how much that would total to for the government to actually contribute on top of what it's contributing already?
So you're saying that you want a guaranteed 5 percent rate? You want us to use an assumption?
No, what I'm saying is I want us to use the same assumptions.
But there are two different plans, Senator, and two different time horizons, that's what I --
But they're both, but they're both plans that are going to be investing the money.
But you're talking about a hybrid plan that invests in perpetuity forever, and you're talking about in comparison with the plan that at best is going to be invested in, for only 20 years.
But the assumption must always be the same if we're going to really --
Then you want to extend, then you want to make the same, then you need to extend the time horizon for the D.C. plan into perpetuity.
That's fine.
Then it's the same.
That's fine, because that's --
But what value does that bring when it's not based on reality?
No, but here, here's the reality. The reality is you're comparing a D.C. plan at 5 percent and a hybrid plan at 7, and I'm saying compare the two at 5.
I'm comparing a plan that exists in the way of a D.C. plan and a plan that is proposed in the way of a hybrid plan. I don't come up with the assumptions.
But you're assuming that --
I'm simply creating what is on the table.
You're assuming that the 7 --
And you're trying to change those assumptions to make it something that's not based in reality. I can build a castle for you.
One second.
No problem.
One second, Mr. Cruz.
Well, I, I mean, I'm talking, so, okay.
One second, excuse me, you're in the, you're on the legislative floor. So one second. First of all, first of all, as an investment advisor, I'll tell you that we never ever guarantee rates of return. So whether it's a defined benefit plan or defined contribution plan, you don't go and promise people 7 percent.
I don't know that we did.
Okay, you, you can have an Ebola outbreak and wipe out half the United States, anything can happen, okay? Everything is always based on assumptions. Now, all I'm asking for is we use the same assumptions for the D.C. plan and the DB plan. Now, you're turning around and you're saying that, oh, I'm trying to skew reality, but the reality is that we cannot guarantee 7 percent. We can never guarantee 7 percent, and you know that, and I know that. Now, let's look at 5 percent for both, and what would the true cost be if that was equal in the assumptions? I don't know why the retirement fund is trying to hide what the assumptions would look like. Let's look at both, equal.
We have a mountain of paper that demonstrates we're not trying to hide anything, but look, like I said, you want a castle, we'll build it for you. So go ahead.
That's what this bill is trying to promise, a castle, and I'm trying to make sure that castle is exactly what we're going to be able to achieve. So let's look at castle to castle, 5 percent.
Okay, I mean, yeah, we can do 5. So, I think we're on page eleven. So, thirty-seven forty-seven is the benefit that we're going to get for, for the hybrid plan. In the second example, this is, this is a DC member with no contribution, or I'm sorry, with no distribution, age forty-five, ten years in a, and of DC service, retires at the age of thirty. This is their current balance, transferred to the hybrid plan, and this, this, this represents their remaining balance of forty-five hundred dollars. Their projected salary at retirement is eighty-one thousand. This is their projected salary at retirement. All the way to the bottom of page eleven, under the DC plan, a calculated annuity of sixteen fifty-one, Social Security at twenty-two hundred, and a hybrid of thirty-seven thirty-two. The final example, example number three, is an, is an individual aged sixty with twenty-five years of service, transferred from DB to DC in ninety-five, received forty distribution, retires at age sixty-five with thirty years of service, and a salary of seventy-four thousand, projected salary of eighty-one thousand. Flipping to page thirteen, the result is a DC plan calculate, or converted annuity of twelve seventy-five, Social Security of two thousand, and a hybrid benefit of just over So, that concludes the, um, the presentation on, on the hybrid plan and the different costs. I know we asked a lot of questions, but if there are any other questions...
We have, um, did you want to... Madam Speaker, yes.
Thank you. There was a question that I had asked, and based, of course, on, on what you're presenting, you're saying that currently, if this plan passes, all those who are currently in the DC plan can remain in the DC plan, but all new employees thereafter, then anyone who comes in after the effective date of this, that they all must be in the hybrid plan. So, my question is, why couldn't the new employees who are coming in be given the option of entering the DC or entering the hybrid, hybrid plan?
I believe we addressed that issue with the vice speaker and presented that the cost would actually go up, so it would defeat the objective of maintaining a cost, a cost-neutral plan. And the reason it goes up is because if you're not having a pool of individuals and you're leaving it open, there's not that guaranteed payment for those benefits, for those individuals. And so, there was a study done, I'm not sure where it is at this point in time, but I did see a study that was done that would increase the costs to the government by three percent, two to three percent.
So, you're saying it's going to increase by that amount, and I think the reason why you're saying that, I think, is because of several assumptions that you guys were making, that you were assuming that, and, and I know you did the, the range of one hundred percent transferring, and then you did the other extreme of zero percent, you know, transferring, and, and they're both unrealistic. You can't, you know, put your hat on either one of those extremes. And when I had called the retirement office and spoke to them about this, about maybe two weeks ago, I had asked, is that, why don't you get the, not names, of course, because those are private, but to get the numbers of those who are in the DC plan who are doing well, and then that would then narrow your assumption, and then we can get, you know, close to, you know, an accurate figure in terms of whether there's going to be a loss or gain. I'm under the impression that because of those assumptions, that you need to have, really, a greater number to make this plan work, and making it, of course, mandatory for anyone new coming in, so that then, you know, it would make the program, this new plan, workable.
Let me, let me go back to the objectives that...
Slide, slide, closer.
That was presented to the fund back in two thousand and ten. One, it was to provide a benefit plan, whatever it's called at the time, that would provide a minimum benefit similar, but not exactly like Social Security. And that's because the nature of the DC plan over the last twenty years is that we saw we had employees that are, are not saving enough and would not have sufficient enough money to retire. So, objective number one was to come up with a plan that had a floor. We could not go back to the old DB plan for various reasons, but, and what, the second objective was to make sure that it was cost-neutral, not only to the government of Guam as much as possible, but also to the taxpayers. And that's why the objective was, whatever the costs is to the government today, we would try to keep it as close as that with the fact that we're still providing that ben, that floor benefit for the government of Guam employees. So, those were the three tasks that, or the three objectives, and based upon the sixteen scenarios and any other scenarios you want to run, this was the plan that met those three objectives to the best of the fund's ability at the time.
Okay, you, you talked about sixteen scenarios, and then Speaker Joe T. spoke about four options that they had considered, and I really wanted him to explain this, maybe you can, because I'm sure that it was presented to you. So, the four are terminate DC and merge with the DB, the DC to be supplemented by Social Security, three, the DC to be supplemented by Secured Foundation that's currently offered by Great West, and four, that the DC be supplemented or replaced by the proposed hybrid plan. So, we've heard, I mean, I, I don't know what Secured Foundation is, and that was the question I want to ask you, if that was one option, and why was that option somehow scrapped?
All right. So, Secured Foundation is a product that's currently being offered by the plan, the DC plan's third-party administrator, and it works such that it, it provides a guaranteed floor benefit upon retirement for a number of years. We looked at that as a short-term, well, we, we currently offer that plan to those members in the DC side. So, we were, you know, we had looked at that as, as a possible option to create, to create a floor for retirement from employees in the DC plan.
So, this plan, then, this Secured Foundation can actually provide a floor?
It's an annuity-based, it's an annuity, yes, yes, the short end, yes.
And because what you're saying with the hybrid is that you wanted that floor?
Correct.
So, then, this plan then, so this is a plan that's currently offered to DC members?
Right, so, right.
They are or they aren't? Because the vice speaker is saying no.
It, it is a plan that's being offered, but it's, um, yes, it is a plan that's being offered, currently.
It's one of the investment options that a DC member has available.
No.
It is, the board has adopted Secured Foundations, and the education process has begun since, was it June?
Of this year. A little, yeah, there.
Sometime this year, the education process has been going out to all Gov-Guam employees that it exists. If you want to, you know, they can call the third-party administrator down here, and she can tell you who she's visited, what depart...
Yeah, because I...
You're going to need the mic, just pull it closer.
Yeah, so, the Secured Foundations portfolios have been available beginning this year, and I know they've been educating Gov-Guam employees on it, because I've got called as to, and I, I can't tell you what they, how that plan exactly works, but the board did adopt that, and I know it went into effect this year.
Well, I guess maybe we're going to have to decide if, you know, we want to call the third party, but I thought that that person is not here. Is that the, the actuary?
No.
Who comes here every quarter?
No. The third-party administrator for the DC plan is a company called Great West, she's, and the company's represented by Alice.
Okay.
Alice Tyron.
So, I don't know if my colleague...
She's here, on island.
...to bring her in. So, then, so, so let me ask you this question then, because you said you wanted a floor. The hybrid provides a floor. The Secured Foundation also provides a floor, so therefore, going back again to that question, that if it provides a floor, and the question I had asked, that you're going to bring, come back with some answers, is that they re, five percent by the government in the DC plan, a reduction to one point eight, could then now we go back and increase, of course, the savings for those if then, and I'm not sure if that's going to be part of the Secured Foundation, because you said that was only implemented this year.
Correct.
Okay. So, you're going to have, you're going to come back with those answers.
Okay. You have a question?
I, well, I don't know if we can do it this afternoon, because they may need to, in, in order to make sure that they give you the correct answer, I think they're going to need to talk to the actuary, and I don't know if they want to do that by themselves, and I know the time in Los Angeles is, is different. What, and obviously, they're going to have to do that. They, we may need to just recess until Tuesday, because I know we have a funeral on Monday. So, if we recess until Tuesday, or we can come back this afternoon for any additional questions.
I'm sorry.
You're the one that wanted us to know about Secured Foundations.
Yes, and that's what, that's what he was asking me about, the Secured Foundation.
So, I'm, I'm wondering if, yes, and what I'm saying is that we can, we can re, recess till Tuesday for the fund members, for the board, so they can get the numbers back from their actuary and their financial advisors, so that you get your apples-to-apples comparisons that you want. And it'll take, I don't think they can do it in a couple of hours, and I don't want them to do it in a couple of hours, because I want them to be able to stand behind the numbers that they're showing you. So, I, moving till Monday is not going to work, because I know we have a colleague that, that we must have a, not, not, be here on Monday. So, let's talk about Tuesday. But if you want Secured Foundations, I can ask for the Great Western representative to come talk to us about that this afternoon. Let them go back and talk, try to see if they can get a hold of their actuary to start getting the numbers, so by Tuesday morning, they can make those presentations to you. But if this afternoon at, at two or two-thirty, we want to come back and talk about the Secured Foundation, that, that might be something we can do today.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I actually pay pretty close attention to the DC plan. I've never heard of the Secured Foundation thing before. It's actually news to me that we have an annuity option in the DC plan. I mean, I, I check in regularly onto my wife's some retirement fund account, and I've, I've never seen a website posting or anything, so this will be very, very interesting to find out more about.
Okay. So, why, why don't we do two-thirty, because I, we, I still had to find her, to get her in here, and then we'll, then after two-thirty today, we'll recess until Tuesday to get the numbers back from them on all the numbers that were asked for.
Can I just clarify, because I know he said he's never heard of it, and I haven't either, and, and I have the former speaker's notes, because before he left, I asked him that question, and he just gave me his notes, and I thought I'll ask you then exactly what Secured Foundation is, okay?
Okay. So, we'll recess until two-thirty, at which time, I hope, I have the Great Western person here to be able to make the presentation.